All right, City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1433. Today is May 6th. It is 7:06 PM. We're going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting with item number one, with the clerk please, call the roll.
Adams.
Present.
Brown. Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
All right, all council members are present and accounted for. Moving on to item number two, which is the minutes. Has everyone received a copy of the minutes? Are there any changes or corrections to be made? All right, hearing none. Going to move to item number three, which is presentations, and we do not have any. Mr. Levendowski, we'll have to discuss this at the next work session, but I do want to start seeing more presentations again. A lot of people like the business of the month, and we do want to recognize our residents for their accomplishments. So let's make it a point to start bringing presentations back, because it's everybody's favorite part. All right. All right. I'm sorry. We would also like to acknowledge the Cottle family. And at this time, I think we will take a moment of silence to acknowledge her passing. So we're going to do this for a full minute. So if everyone will please acknowledge for one minute. Thank you. Minute has passed, so we do want to extend our deepest condolences to the Cottle family at this time. If anyone else would like to make any remarks?
I would like to send my condolences to the family, and then I hope that the city will do a proclamation or presentation of something to the family in the very near future. My condolences to you and your family.
I just wanted to say that your mother was very, mother and wife were kind. She enthusiastically and was very much excited about serving the community. She really truly enjoyed doing that and didn't have the privilege to work alongside her necessarily, but through different committees and boards, and always really good, kind energy. And so she will definitely be missed, and I'm sending you my condolences. You're welcome.
If the family would like a proclamation, we can definitely talk about that offline. So please get with us or our Clerk of Council, Ms. DeKeia Bailey, because we do want to recognize her, and we thank you for showing up today. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number four, which is communications from the public. So we've reached that point in our meeting when a citizen may express an opinion, make a statement, or address a concern, or ask a question on any subject that is not otherwise on the agenda. Comments will be recorded into the minutes and passed along to be addressed by the appropriate staff or city council committee as needed. This portion of the meeting is not for city council to provide responses to a citizen comment, but to hear what the citizen has to say. If you wish to respond, if you wish for a response from the city to your concern or request for information, please be sure to leave your contact information with the clerk before you leave the meeting. Accordingly, all speakers must address their remarks through the mayor. Your comments will be limited to five minutes. So if anyone at this time would like to address council, please come up to the podium. You can sign in. All right, hearing none. We're going to move on to item number five, which is reports from council members, and we're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to let everyone know that Hamilton County has a program for lead-based paint in homes. So if you have a home that was built before, 1978 or before, and you have a small child in your home, there are resources available for you to be able to get some funding for that. And also, MSD has a program, a grant program for seniors, if there's any sewer issues that they may have. Other than that, sir, I don't have any other comments to make.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Adams. Is that program through the county? Is it being administered through CAA or what department?
Hamilton County Public Health. I apologize. Hamilton County Public Health and MSD Metropolitan Sewer District.
All right, thank you for that. We can make sure we get that at least included into our newsletter. And I don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any?
Yes, sir. I would like to please revisit the conversation that we had at our last work session regarding possibly claiming a fifth Monday of the month to work with the school board collectively as a council.
Okay.
We have a great relationship, just an opportunity to just kind of brainstorm and talk about some of the things that we're doing on council and what they're doing with the board, and how we can just collectively continue to make the city amazing.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. All right, moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Last Saturday, we saw our annual yard sale, and it looked pretty good. I don't think Mother Nature liked it very much that we were doing it, but nevertheless, it was really nice to see everyone out. And I tried to bargain somebody down on the lawnmower, and it did not work. So it was great. I did, I tried. So it worked really well, went very nicely. The environmental awareness met, and we are continuing our partnership with the school district and serving them and providing for resources so that they can do a number of different outside projects, as well as field trips, really exciting programming that's going on there. And you can most certainly get involved and help support that work by contacting the city and Environmental Awareness under Wright-Gwynn. But what was especially nice was on an annual basis, the environmental awareness has an art competition. We partner with the high school, and students are able to enter different ceramics, all sorts of different mediums. And the charge with this work is that they either talk about or display an artistic rendering of an environmental issue, or they talk about an endangered species or something along those lines, and then they create a narrative that goes with it. And Ms. Becky Young, the art teacher over there, showed us some absolutely beautiful works of art. These kids at Windwoods are extraordinarily talented. I mean, this work is taking them sometimes up to 12 weeks just to complete one portion, or I'm sorry, the lot of their projects. And so myself and Wright and Dr. Susan went over there to select those, to vote on and essentially select those art projects. We came to some decisions. I can't reveal those right now, but they will be out in the city lobby very soon. And so we definitely want you to check those out, and we'll let you know when they will be unveiled.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Do you have any work session items to add?
Just that some time ago, back when I had first gotten on here, we had a public safety, a public safety committee. There's been a number of things that have gone on, and I think for consolidation and conciseness and sharing the wonderful things of the city and how we can best engage and make sure we keep on top of some safety in terms of the communication in a more kind of comprehensive manner, that I'd like to just revisit and talk about the opportunity to maybe relaunch that.
Okay. So about public safety specifically?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to the residents of Forest Park and to my fellow council members. The month of May is Asian American Pacific Island and Native Hawaiian Heritage Month. So for those residents of Forest Park who represent those communities, we thank you, and we'd like to acknowledge that. But also too, beginning last night and it ends tonight, this is Holocaust Remembrance Day. So it started sundown last night and it goes to sundown tonight. And that commemorates those who lost their lives, the 6 million Jews lost their lives in the Holocaust, but also those brave individuals who fought and the ones who survived as well. So we'd like to recognize that as well on this day. Regarding civil service, we do have three applicants who want to participate in our various boards and commissions, so we will be interviewing those individuals soon. We will get a date and time and respond to those applicants so we can get them in here and get them on these boards. And I have nothing else at this time.
Thank you for that. Would you like to add any work session items?
Not at this time, sir. Thank you.
All right, and moving on to First Vice Mayor Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, but I would like to add to the work session that there are seven council members, and we're not a strong mayor city by the charter. So I would like to discuss that and how the seven council members, because there's some things that are going on that I'm not pleased with, that are being done, and it's not, the council members don't have any input.
Mm-hmm.
So I would like a discussion on that, and that will...
So I can add it as a discussion or a charter?
As a discussion item, yes. Yes.
All right, thank you for that. And then moving on to Second Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and good evening to our residents of the City of Forest Park. I want to take the time to congratulate the Woodin Woods Warriors graduating class of 24. They will be graduating next week. They have 61 honor diploma recipients, so that's amazing. Also, we want to congratulate our Northwest students, our private schools, our homeschoolers, and our college students for all their accomplishments this summer, this year. May is my favorite time of year because of all the graduations as an educator, and so it's just an amazing time. This past Saturday, the community came out to make 300 green and blue ribbons for our fence to honor our graduates. It was my pleasure spending time with our Woodin Woods executive team, their board members, current parents, former parents, and our community. And all the Greek sororities came out, and so we had amazing time putting together the ribbons. It was a labor of love, and so we hope when you drive down Woodin Road, the pride will flow through you as we congratulate our graduates. This week is Nurses Week, so as a nurse and former councilwoman Sheila Callow was also a registered nurse, and so nurses do make a difference in our community. And so we want to thank all the nurses in our community for their advocacy, their dedication, and their compassion in improving the quality of life for our residents. Also, Quality of Life Commissioner, we want to take the time to thank Commissioner Laura Walkie. She had a vision along with Council First Vice Mayor Denise Holt to do a skating event in our community, and so the plans are in the works. And so we're hoping this summer, once we finalize the dates and times, that we will have a mobile skating rink for our residents and our families just in the summer season. And that completes my report.
That's really good. Thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Would you like to add any work session items?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to residents of Forest Park. Not so much as a formal report, but just to make comment to our residents on the experience that I had, and it may be a thing that some of the residents already know about. But I stopped in at a eatery place and just had a small item and spent just a short time and did a signing on the payment and made signing of what I acknowledged to pay. And later in days, I referenced my card account, and the bill was higher. So I contacted the place of business and commented to them about it. And the action of when it should have been credit wasn't within the timeframe, so I stopped over there and questioned the management. And it kind of caught me off guard, but they kind of say that it's a process that has been happening and that there's a percentage that gets added even though it's not something that you authorize when you sign on your cards. So just wanted to make that announcement that, you know, for people to kind of maybe pay attention. I know sometimes if you use a card a lot, you have a lot of items, and you may miss something, but it just kind of caught me off guard that an additional cost was added without my acknowledgement.
Right, right.
So I just wanted to make that comment to council and the residents. And the person, the management concluded that it's an action that has been taking place. And it kind of surprised me that it was said in that manner. But yeah, I just wanted to speak on that to the residents.
Yeah, that is concerning, yeah.
Yeah, and...
Make sure that we...
Yeah, because it was associated with a restaurant, and...
Okay.
Restaurant within our region. But the comment was stated as if it's an action that deals with multiple restaurants. So...
Within city limits.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Andy, we'll get with Assistant City Manager, and then we'll have a discussion about how we should approach that restaurant and that issue in particular. Thank you for bringing that up.
It was interesting. I just, I'm sorry. I just read an article, I think it was out in California or something. They're actually outlawing, they called them like junk fees or something.
Yeah. And what was so surprising, that when it happened, I made the call like about noon time and spoke a little over half hour or so. And then, you know, I work from home, so it was an option. Got a chance to the Sherri show, and it was on her show of the action that she experienced. And I'm like, you got to be kidding me.
Wow.
You got to be kidding me. You're watching Sherri while you're supposed to be working out.
I was still, I was still working.
Okay, well, that's, actually, that's, thank you for bringing that up. I'm going to look at my statement a lot closer now.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I just wanted to put that to the public to just kind of pay attention.
Pay cash.
It caught me off guard. It really surprised me. Yeah, it really surprised me, yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any work session items to add at this time?
None at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, that concludes item number five. Going to move on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. I don't have any report at this time, and I think these are good work session items, so I don't have anything else to add to the work session. Moving on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report. We have our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Andy Levendowski.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just, I got advance and other information. Just, we have chipper this week, just so everybody knows. Get your stuff out, but not too much. And then we had the yard sale as Councilwoman Clark talked about. Yes, it did rain in the morning, but all in all, I think it shaped up to be a decent afternoon. So for the most part, everything went well. Can't fight Mother Nature. We have tickets to the senior spring fling is still available, and it's held on Friday, May 17th. So if anybody wants, they're still, they're free to our seniors. We're looking at doing Soul Food Truck Night. We're throwing around some dates, be either May or June. We're still working on the exact date. Gearing up for the rest of Parks and Summer Series, so check our website for updated calendar. Fall soccer signups are from May 15th to July 15th? 5th, July 5th. And then the Windin Woods Boosters, they have a free SAT prep at Windin Woods High School beginning the first Saturday in June. I think June 1st is an open house, and then the rest of it runs for six weeks after that. I mean, contact the Boosters Club or Brandon Weir's for further information. And then other information, we have a concrete pad for outdoor fitness center has been installed. I think mid to late summer is when it'll be completed. There's several steps involved. There'll be some artwork, there'll be all that go into it. So hopefully, mid to late summer, I believe. And then, weather permitting, the walking path should be installed in Central Park. Maybe this week or next. Should take three days to complete once they start. So that'll be a really nice addition to Central Park. City flowers are being delivered next week, and we will start the beautification process around the city and around the mulch beds and all that that the city has. The city's email newsletter is going out again this week. If you have not signed up, please do so online. We're trying to build that to get the word out for everything that's going on, so please sign up. We'll also be rolling out a new city website. It's been in the works for about a few months. It should be ready to go in the next, probably within the next 30 days. So please look out for that. And then lastly, car safety. There's been a rash of car break-ins across the tri-state area, not just us. Police agencies are investigating and believe it's some, to some degree, organized crime. So just don't leave valuables in your car. That's all I can say. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Andy. I didn't know the walking path was so close to being installed, so that's actually really exciting for our residents, and that means it'll be up and running in time for all of our summer programming.
Correct.
I have a question for you, Mr. Levendowski. The, so last year, we were able to receive a grant for Jazz in the Park, a pretty decent, nice-sized one. Have we received that reimbursement back?
I would have to check on that. I think we have, but I will double check.
And that is going to be really important so that we can try to get it again this year. And so if you could let me know, that would be great. And then, in addition, you said that you were looking at a potential night for the Soul Food Truck Night. Quick question, when is Jazz Fest? Is that on a Saturday in October?
Yeah, Saturday, August. First Saturday, it's like August 3rd, I think.
So what if we, could we even consider doing a piggyback? A lot of people are coming from out of town, and they make it a whole weekend. And so if we did it on that Friday leading into Saturday, that might be a real fun thing to consider.
I'll bring that up to the park.
Yeah, we can discuss that at work session, because there were a number of residents who actually mentioned it last year, that if we moved to two days, that they would be excited about that. So we have been discussing that for a while. So thank you for that, Andy. All right, moving on to item number...
I just have a question. How long should a resident, when they call a department with an issue, how long should, not for resolution, but how long should they wait for a response from that department?
I think our goal is 24 hours or within one business day.
Because I have a complaint myself.
Okay. Well, actually, I think that's something we can add to work session, like a turnaround time for residents concerned.
Yeah, we can add that.
Okay, we can do that for work session. All right, moving on to item number eight, which is other reports. We're going to start with our Law Director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you might recall from our last work session, I reviewed ordinances across the state of Ohio regarding the adult-use cannabis ordinance that you have tonight, 15-2024. I also consulted with the city manager regarding Resolution Number 19-2024. At our clerk's request, I looked over a records deposition issue that came within the police department about public disclosure, body cam, and dashboard cam. And then I provided a position statement on a complaint that's been filed against the city by the House Civil Rights Commission. If you have any questions regarding those matters, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Wykoff. Any questions for our Law Director? All right, we're going to move on to our other report from our Clerk of Council, Mrs...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, there's one other thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Last council meeting, we talked about the fact that the state of Ohio passed legislation to prevent municipalities from doing any governance over tobacco and tobacco-related products. Well, lo and behold, there's a lawsuit pending right now in Columbus in Franklin County Common Police Court. Their first hearing on a preliminary injunction is May 17. And it's, the issue is whether that legislation passed usurps the constitutional power municipalities have. So I'll be watching that case to see if case law changes.
Actually, yeah, please keep us informed on that, because I think that's really, that would be really, really good to see what the outcome of that is. So thank you for that, Mr. Wykoff. And then we're moving on to our...
I have a question for Mr. Wykoff.
For John?
Yes, so there's been, a couple of residents have talked about a couple of issues they've had with some loose dogs. And I can't recall, what happens when, and this just could be beneficial to those that listen, but what happens when they find a dog that's loose and they're scared of the dog, and the dog seems like it's not there for them?
The citizens should call the police department. We have been citing dog owners, harborers, and/or keepers. So it doesn't necessarily have to be the owner. I could own the dog, but if my kid is outside with my dog, my kid becomes responsible. So that's, that would be the keeper of the dog. But we have been citing them. We have, it seems like every week in court, we have one to two cases of loose dogs. So they just need to call the police department and report whatever the issue is.
When they're cited, are they fined as well? Is it like a fine and a...
Well, if they're found guilty or plead guilty, yes.
Yeah, and they have to go to mayor's court, correct?
Yes, it goes to mayor's court.
So John, so John, that's a different thing then, because we have two dogs that are always running loose,
but it's not from our neighborhood.
Well, the person, the owner, keeper, harbinger would have to be a citizen of Forest Park for us to cite. In that situation, about the only thing you can do, and this has happened in my neighborhood, you get no help, but you call the local dog warden and ask for them to come out and get these dogs, and they won't, but that's all you can do. I mean, I've been through this. We've got a nasty dog in our neighborhood...
Yeah, we got two.
...that frightens my dog, and I've called twice before, and they say, oh, well, we just don't have the staff to do this.
I'm from the country. We got ways to deal with those.
So it's not very helpful. But for us to have jurisdiction that we could detain that dog, take it to a shelter, but then now you're getting our police department involved in what is jurisdictionally really whatever the neighboring community is.
Okay.
So if I mace this dog...
That's where the older the dog is.
...because I can't come off my deck, then what happens?
If what? If you get bit?
If I mace this dog...
Oh, okay.
...because I can't come off my deck. I'm afraid of dogs.
Okay.
If I mace this dog that's in my backyard at my deck, won't let me off, then I mace him, then I'm going to jail, right?
Well, you'd have to talk to a lawyer about that.
You are.
Aw, man.
You know, I mean, you can mace a dog if a dog's threatening you. You can defend yourself, you have a right. You get into all kinds of collateral issues.
I know, you get in trouble more for a dog than a person.
Is it excessive force? You can't do what Governor Noem did and shoot your dog.
Yes, you cannot, right, right.
I mean, you can use reasonable efforts to deter the dog from attacking you, that type of thing.
See how bad it, we've even confronted the people that own the dogs, you know?
Okay, well, let's, let's table that discussion, and then maybe actually, I think it would be beneficial to add the number for the dog warden. So if any other residents are having issues with that, maybe we can add that number to the newsletter.
But roaming dogs, the first step should be to call the police department here, not a 911 call, but, I mean, you can call 911, but that system is very congested. Just call police, say, hey, I live here, and there's a couple of dogs running around and scaring me.
Yeah, I'm not sure if maybe even we put out some things. And I think the newsletter is really great, but we are definitely seeing an increase, and somebody's going to get hurt.
I think we have a non-emergency number. What is that number, Andy? Is it 211 or...
Yeah, I think it's 521, that's a 595, 5211.
Okay, well...
I can't remember. I'll, I'll give it for you, though.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we get the correct number and then disseminate that.
The non-emergency number is three-one-one.
The non-emergency number for Forest Park?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's for the city of Cincinnati, I apologize.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
But they'll transfer you over, if you call the city of Cincinnati, they'll transfer you to Forest Park non-emergency number.
Okay, okay, well, that's good to know. Alright, uh, we'll move on to our clerk of council, uh, Mr. Kia Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers fourteen dash twenty twenty-four and fifteen dash twenty twenty-four, and resolution numbers thirteen dash twenty twenty-four through nineteen dash twenty twenty-four has been posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. We have a few of these to get through. Uh, moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders. There's none, so we're gonna move on to item number ten, which is new business, and I need a motion to suspend.
Motion, motion to suspend.
Yeah, you're fine, go ahead.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only ordinance numbers fourteen dash twenty twenty-four and fifteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
An ordinance amending chapter thirty, general provisions of the codified-
Hold on, I'm so sorry. Just that these ordinances were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Alright, thank you for that.
I apologize, Councilwoman Clark.
Yeah, you're fine. Um, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Alright, motion to suspend passes. Um, now, uh, will the clerk please read ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance amending chapter thirty, general provisions of the codified, codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park as it relates to posting places and declaring an emergency.
Tomato, tomato. Codified, codified, we, we get it. Uh, yes, is there a motion, council, council member Adams?
This audience, a motion that we approve the, um, the agreement to amend this, uh, oh, God, this is my first one, I have to about that.
I move for adoption or passage of ordinance number.
Thank you. I move to amend the-
No, I moved to adopt.
I move to adopt or accept. Ordinance number, uh, fourteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for that. Councilmember Adams, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, yeah. Uh, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. It's been moved improperly seconded. Now, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Adams?
Yes, sir, that this ordinance aims to revise the existing public posting locations within the city of Forest Park to enhance the dissemination of legislation and public meeting information to residents.
Alright, thank you for that. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alright, ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four passes seven-zero. Uh, the next ordinance, number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four, will the clerk please read that by title only?
Ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance enacting one-one-zero point one-six-zero exec of the codified ordinances of the city for the sale of adult-use cannabis and declaring an emergency.
You mean codified, right? I'm just, I'm messing with you, I'm messing with you. I move to adopt ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four. It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, this is actually kind of self-explanatory, and without any, um, information from the state as it relates to adult-use cannabis, uh, the city is actually going to move to prohibit, uh, adult use at this time. Uh, so with that, I would urge adoption. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on, uh, the motion to adopt?
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Alright, ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four passes seven-zero. Uh, I need another motion to suspend.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read for the first time only by title only. Resolution numbers thirteen dash twenty twenty-four through nineteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
These resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Alright, thank you for that. First vice mayor Holt, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Our motion to suspend passes seven-zero. Will the clerk please read Resolution Number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, uh, by title only?
Resolution Number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against various properties by the city of Forest Park Community Development.
Alright, is there a motion? First vice mayor Holt?
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
This is just a housecleaning item that must be completed in order to access properties for maintenance performed by the city.
Alright, thank you. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Alright, resolution passes seven-zero. Uh, will the clerk please read Resolution Number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Resolution Number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Pruse Construction for the construction of a new driveway at six-sixty Northland Boulevard in waive competing bid, bidding requirements.
Alright, is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Oh, yes, sir. I would like to adopt Resolution Number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, Pruse Construction is a site contractor for the new library project. As part of the land deal with the library, the city agreed to install a new road from Northland Boulevard. The cost is not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty-four, there, and forty-five thousand dollars. As this road is at the edge of the library project, it is most efficient for the same contractor to perform the work, which reduces delays in the library's opening. The pricing has been reviewed and is reasonable, which savings due to the contractors already being on the site. The road will also be used for new developments surrounding the library in the future.
Alright, thank you for that. Councilmember Harrison, uh-
That, um, amount is two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand forty-five dollars, you said forty-five thousand?
Forgive me.
Oh, thank you for that. Thank you for that catch. Um, alright, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
No.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Alright, resolution passes six-one. Uh, will the clerk please read Resolution Number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Resolution Number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and approve grant from the Ohio Department of Development Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Program for Wright Farm West improvements.
Alright, is there a motion, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, uh, I motion that we adopt Resolution Number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, the city applied for grant funding through the Ohio, uh, Department of Development of Water and Wastewater Infrastructure, and through that grant, um, we totaled two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand forty-five dollars. Uh, the funds will be used by the city for water quality improvements at the Wright Farm West Detention Basin, and this allows us to accept those dollars.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark.
You're welcome.
Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
No, I mean, yes. Sorry, yes, yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Alright, resolution passes seven-zero. Will the clerk please read Resolution Number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Resolution Number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Transit Infrastructure Fund Program and to execute contracts as required.
Alright, is there a motion, uh, Councilmember Clark?
Yes, I would like for the adoption of Resolution Number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Alright, it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, sir. The city is planning to make capital improvements to the West Kemper Road Transit Corridor and surrounding pedestrian access areas. As with the previous application and awards, uh, the city is able to upgrade access to public transit routes as well. This has been a very successful program, and we'd like to continue it. The application is due at the end of May.
Alright, will the clerk please call the role on, uh, the motion?
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Alright, motion passes seven-zero. Uh, will the clerk please read Resolution Number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Resolution Number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to remove lanes against the property by the city of Forest Park Public Works Department.
Alright, is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Yes, sir. I move that we adopt Resolution Number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, the city performs city and, uh, street and sidewalk work in twenty-twenty as part of the annual street program. A portion of the sidewalk costs were to be assessed by the property owners. In twenty-twenty-three, those assessments were approved and sent in to the county auditor. One property was incorrectly assessed. This resolution corrects that and removes the assessment from the auditor's sight.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alright, resolution passes seven-zero. Will the clerk please read Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution declaring it necessary to improve public streets and easements by improving and installing drainage facilities on certain properties within the city and all necessary appurtenances.
Alright, uh, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, the, uh, city notified the homeowners association of the Mill Road Station subdivision of, uh, dam, drainage violations for a lack of maintenance at one of its detention, uh, basin. The association received quotes and asked if the city could perform the work and access the property owners. The petition was created and submitted to the city to form this work. Uh, so this, this resolution declares that this work is necessary for, uh, for proper drainage. So with that, I motion for Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Clark.
I think, is there a discuss, can we continue that discussion?
Oh, there is a, uh, uh, Councilmember Sylvester, if you want to complete the, the last sentence of the discussion?
Okay, yes, sir.
No, I'm, no, I'm sorry about that. I think, so you were just calling for the vote on that, and then we'll have discussion op, option after that, right?
No, no, this was discussion, and, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the vote does come after discussion, but, yeah.
Okay, so I just had a, I just had a question about this.
You had a question about the discussion.
Alright, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, so I understand, um, how this works. We've, we've had, talked at length about it. Uh, the one thing I'm not seeing, um, in this resolution, and maybe it just shouldn't be put in here, um, and maybe I'm incorrect on that, but the, in the event that there would be a penalty that in the two years that it's not paid with the accrued interest by those homeowners, what, is there a penny, penalty levied that I'm not reading here, or is there one that exists, or?
Penalty on the homeowners, or?
A penalty for the repayment. So they have to, they're, they're doing a two semi-annual repayment, I'm sorry, four in total, but two semi, two semi-annual and for, for two years in order for the, for us to be paid back since we're essentially fronting that money. But I'm not reading anywhere where there's, uh, you know, in the event that after the two years, if they don't make those payments, what is the consequence? Or does that not, should that not live in this document?
Okay. Andy is- I was Scott, yeah. Our stormwater director?
Yes, um, this assessment is being placed on the property taxes. So for somebody not to pay, it's they're not paying their property taxes. So any penalty for not paying the property taxes will be levied against them, interest or whatever, through the county itself.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Alright, clear it up. Alright, will the clerk, uh, call the role on the motion?
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Alright, motion passes, uh, seven-zero. Uh, will the clerk please read Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to finalize the sale of certain municipally-owned property in accordance with the terms and conditions contained in the finalized development agreement as previously amended and approved by city council.
Alright, I move to adopt Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four. Alright, it's been moved improperly seconded. Uh, so the city, the city council authorized the sale of approximately fifteen acres of land at the Cameron Park Site to Cristo Homes, Inc., for the development of a hundred and two homes. Uh, the land purchase agreement was negotiated with JA Development, which is a Cristo Homes entity, on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and has been amended twice. Uh, so this resolution consolidates the agreement and its amendments into one document for public review and authorizes the land sale closing. Uh, now, the project involves a two-phase development approved by the City Planning Commission, with phase one comprising of sixty-eight units, and phase two, thirty-four units. So the city plans to sell the phase one land immediately, generating, uh, approximately six-hundred-and-fifteen thousand eight-hundred-ninety-five dollars in revenue, and issue an option for phase two upon phase one's completion. So the total revenue from both phases is estimated at, uh, approximately one million one-hundred-seventy-nine thousand one-hundred-ninety-five dollars, with cleanup costs deducted, resulting in a net revenue of approximately one million eighty-six thousand one-hundred-ninety-five dollars. So the resolution enables the city to finalize phase one land sale and grant an option for phase two to JA Development. And with that, I would urge adoption.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So you're saying the one-point-one-seven-nine million, um, and we're paying for the cleanup?
Yes, we're paying for the cleanup, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, this is in regards to the pool. Uh, remember, we had a discussion about when the pool was demolished?
The before.
So this is really the remediation of the concrete.
I thought you meant cleanup after them.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
So that's why I want-
Before they can even get to work.
Yeah, okay.
Will the clerk please call, will the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Alright, Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four passes, and then, uh, is there a motion, uh, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Alright, this could be a voice vote. Is, uh, is there a second? Alright, any other discussion? Uh, this could be a voice vote, so all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes seven-zero. Alright, and that concludes all of the new business. So is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, this council meeting is adjourned.